All of them. In last, Michigan before three, we had other members here and they, they, they didn't let our company. We don't want to share that.
Um, I'm not able to, can you tell us something about it? Are we going to talk about the raises all paid?
Yeah, we're, yeah, I think I'm talking about, I just have a lot of market questions, that's it. Okay, you got it. You got it. They're what? Yeah, I don't like that, I don't think that is. Yeah, just because of the game. That's what we're fearful, yeah.
It's good to see you gone modern day. I looked down here and thought, shoot, I could have done this from the office at the house on a Zoom call. But now, I'm about Zoom called out.
Yeah, no, you are. Ready, we're on Scott. Did anyone ask you to speak? Yes, there's one sheet here in front of me.
They don't have to sign the sheet to speak. This is a public hearing. Uh, but we know how.
Our name is, or history.
Yeah. Uh, even when asked, go.
No, let's come through email.
Come through email through, to speak. You want me to start it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for being here. This is our public hearing on the twenty twenty one budget. So I call it Order Special Session on Monday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty, nine oh three A M. Now, form is established with all members of the court present. Out of number two, public comments. We have to put, they changed the law in Austin last year that every meeting now has to have public comments on. But this is a public hearing. We're here, here for you guys. And so, we'll, we'll, out of number three, public, conduct a public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget for this year. Ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty one, we begin the public hearing at nine forty four A M.
We do that once, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Do you'd like to address the court you might?
Sure, glad to stay here, right?
You, you, wherever you're comfortable, wherever you're comfortable, wherever you want to do it. Your vibe out there, I think everybody can hear. Would you make that a shot if she was up there?
You know what, I'll have to go up here.
Okay.
Alright, well, um, and I'm not a public speaker, so I'll let you know, but sometimes you know that you need to speak out. And so, we do get the Van Zant news, and I find out a lot of interesting information. We've been citizens of Van Zant County for forty five years, and I love Van Zant County. But, I just felt, after seeing that they, that you're gonna have this kind of, uh, for the possibility to, uh, proposal to raise the annual salaries of the Van Zant County elected officials, that I needed to speak out. Um, this, this is the worst year in my life, and everybody else that I know. Because we're having to go through things that we never had to go through, and we have so much going on. I will say that what I'm speaking out for is not a gift to y'all, because I know you work hard. I told Keith, is our commissioner, and I know that he's doing everything he can with what he has to do the best he can for us. And I appreciate that. Also know that y'all have turned down raises in the past, because you didn't feel right to accept raises. And we appreciate that. But right now, um, I've got friends, I've got people in our county that are, that I know that are struggling. So just to try to go through a little bit of this, it's, um, I asked friends, let them know about this if they hadn't seen it in the paper, and contact their county commissioner, and let them know what they think, because it just kind of washed over me that this wasn't the right year, not this year, to ask for raises. Now, um, Keith told me that he had, uh, offered up to go ahead and give our employees that work so hard, I know they're behind the, what every other county's getting, that they train people in our sheriff's department and other departments, and then, after they got them where they've been training, well, they were offered better, better salaries than other counties. And I, I, we've heard that for years. And they deserve a raise. I just don't know how we're gonna do it this year, but I'm, I'm not, uh, speaking out about that. I appreciate you being, uh, forthcoming, letting know that you have spoken up for them, because that's something that y'all are gonna have to figure out. But as a, as a citizen, I just want to let you know, this year, I don't believe that I would be able to ask for a raise. I haven't had a raise. I took a leave from work because of the danger of family and, and, uh, I got out, it was a hard decision, because I love to work, but everything told me that it was time to step away and, and luckily I listened, because there's some serious stuff going on right now. So, um, my, my thoughts are that people are hurting, and people are dying. We had a neighbor die a week ago. And that was very exciting to hear, uh, that, and we know, you know, people that have passed on from this. Uh, people aren't able to work because of the safety. Um, we have lost jobs, we have businesses that have had to close and, um, for a month or more, and trying to figure out how they can make it. We have people that are having hardships and suffering. Uh, parents, if they're a one, uh, parent household, I don't know how they're doing it, when they have children, if they're, if they have children that weren't able to go to daycare, because it was only essential, uh, children, or if it was, um, that schools and worse, we're seeing what's gonna happen coming up, and praying for the safety of our children and our grandchildren. Uh, but the stresses that's, uh, everybody's going through, because they're not able to pay their bills. Some people, I don't know how they're gonna do it. People are going to food distribution sites. That's coming up this week. Our pastor let people know, if you know somebody in need, there's people in line for food. We never had people that have, need help now like we do right now. I have a friend that's a retired teacher that said, thank you for coming and speaking out, that she knew I was gonna try to speak out. She said, prices on everything have gone up. She said, county taxes alone have skyrocketed. So, I don't, I don't know. Gary checked and said, my husband checked this way about our appraisals. I think it's gone up ten percent, he said. Uh-huh, that's just what he, what he was saying. I had one owner, uh, of a business in Will's Point that told me that he didn't know if he was gonna make it. I had another owner that is, she's, she's doing good for the best in this situation. And she said she a hundred percent agree for no tax, for no raises this time. Um, and so, other friends have said no raises, uh, and we don't know, you're, you're having to figure out for your budget. And I don't know how many people are gonna be able to pay their taxes like they normally can, so that's something else that's a concern. So, I just felt like, there's, we've got so many people struggling, somebody needed to say, hey, not this year. Next year, God willing, we're all gonna be doing better. People are gonna be doing better. I just don't see that from this year. So, thank you for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Andrew, did you want to sleep here?
Well, yeah, yes.
Okay.
He, first of all, was the first caller in that, who's like, are. And, I mean, he, he knew what job made him start it, and I, you all served more money. My friends, Richer Packer, for the mayor's office, for your support, getting his debt paid down. Judge Winters, I mean, he's done a tremendous job. You look at the money he's been making, especially, uh, as an attorney. And it's, it's, you all served the rights, but the appraisals, and I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard something about maybe freezing the appraisals in the last years. Maybe you have a slow, I don't know if that happened in Austin, but they did.
No, we requested, we sent in a resolution to the, to the state, asking them at the state level to not raise the appraisals this year, to use the January first of two thousand nineteen appraisals, and they did not, they did not.
Right, right. Well, uh, we were all on property banks going up, and therefore, the appraisal were made before the COVID thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that worked. The taxes are gonna be paid with post-COVID incomes.
Yes.
And, and, and I'm just afraid that people are not gonna be able to do it. Uh, you know, in, in our particular situation, I won't fix the income, it takes only ten percent of my pension to pay the taxes. And I know, well, that's school taxes, I understand, and I'm just afraid people, old people, major taxes, by the roots of businesses. That, you know, when, when a business goes out, like I said, we lost learning, it's over across the street, how many people lost that? They lost their jobs. The suppliers, like in the business county, I don't know, they're losing that business. It's just really, really bad timing in those. And, and, um, as I said, I know you guys are working to the best you can with what you got. It's that, and that, I think the total increase said fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for all the way to finish. Not only is it just dropping the book, you know, for twenty million dollar months, but, uh, guys, it's just not to write down to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Black, can you?
Sure, I'll. I think his last comment is probably most relevant, when it looked at the increases that you, uh, that's proposed. I don't, I think it's not a question, I don't, I don't think it really means that much to COVID. My only question is, is that my understanding is that the, uh, the number of cases that the county appraisal office is hearing is quadrupled what it is on the level basis, and that the tax rates that are being spread around are not uniform. In my particular case, I have five disputes going for property taxes, because a property across the street from us appraised an eighteen percent more than the house that we're in. Another real property on the corner appraised at fourteen percent, yet another around the corner was at twenty one percent more than what it was this year. There's no rhyme or reason for the rates. There's no, there's no, I can't, there's no logical explanation. So my biggest concern is what is this budget for next year based on? Proposed tax rates that have been requested, and if you're basing your budget off of that, what happens if they lose half of those cases in that budget? Oh, that's, that's, that's number one. Number two, is the, is the rate that you guys are asking to raise your salaries, is a uniform process for all the employees? So road workers from the sheriff's department, the deputies, the jailers, are they getting a raise?
Yes, yes, part of this whole process.
Yes. Okay, so what, so is that, is that, is that, what percent is it talking, three percent? Three percent across the board for everybody, okay? So that three percent is based on the new budget, because the budget went up because the tax rate went up?
Can't wait to get to that.
What's that?
We are, we are, uh, I bet you probably said, because we helped reduce the tax rate from last year. Last year it was point six one, four two three, or six four. This year we reduced tax rate to five eight oh four, two nine two four. That's, uh, that's point, that's about three and a half percent reduction for one hundred dollars. We reduced the tax rate and still was able to include the three percent raise for everybody. So I think we've done our homework. We've been pretty judicial, uh, about, uh, judicious about looking at the tax rate, take care of citizens. There's never a good time to, to ask for a raise for our employees or elected officials. Uh, people forget that in two thousand eight, in two thousand nine, both years, the employees and elected official took a point one five percent reduction on their salary, two years in a row. So, you know.
There's this, well, I, my, my only concern was that number one, you already addressed it, so there is an increase for all the employees.
Yes, okay.
So, uh, and that, that was number one. Then number two, does the tax lawsuit or the disputes with the tax office, is that gonna impact your budget if it goes down? If they lose the.
No, I, they.
Oh, you're, go ahead.
Well, what, what they've done, they did have a whole lot more people bound for, uh, for appearance to get their reduction. And if they've seen most of them, they will still be seeing people through the first week of September. Now, ever in the rate that we have here, we, it's all adjusted for the ones that have already come in and been adjusted. And there's an adjustment for the ones that are coming ahead of, that aren't there yet, because they have the tax. People are, are given allowance for that also.
For check.
So, for check, uh, the rate that we have should be right, are really close. And, and I'll tell you this, the sky, uh, usually is very, very conservative in what he gives us, so I, I'm thinking that we might even be a little better off than, than what he, what he told you.
Okay, that's it. That was all of my, all of my concern. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Bill.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Public hearing, uh, any of you committed to that comment, or would like to address the concerns, or, or anything it is of? Ms. Hill, was there anything we need to point out?
Judge, so proposed tax rate for this year, we started with last year's tax, last year's budget. I mean, that was the letter that the commission's court sent out. Uh, we had, the only increase that we had in the budget was the three percent raise across the board for elected elected officials. We did, we, we allowed officials to send any essential needs request, and what we heard maybe three or four. Uh, so our proposed budget this year is basically the same budget we had in two thousand nineteen. Or two thousand twenty, I'm sorry, this is twenty one, but here, so.
There are some little adjustments, maybe we could be greatly brings, um, in the chief deputy clerk.
We, we did a few.
One, very, very.
I think it was Austria County, the general fund budget, um, about sixty nine, it was sixty nine thousand dollars was what the few adjustments that we made in budgets. You might also want to bring out that we also changed the percentage of the, uh, and, um, I don't know if you're prepared to give those or not, you may want to do that.
Percentage of home tax rates?
Yes, we normally get a seventy eight, twenty two, you're gonna do that the next time.
Plus, there will be lower figures, the numbers of the tax rate and everything. This budget here will raise more total property taxes than last year. Budget of one million one hundred sixty eight thousand six hundred forty nine dollars. That's a, as you know, Austin and their infinite wisdom, Tonka County is a municipality, you can only go up three and a half percent on, on the taxes effective this year. And, uh, so, the amount this budget raises more is the one million one hundred sixty eight thousand six hundred forty nine, which is a six point five five percent, and of that amount, five hundred and fourteen thousand and ninety dollars is the tax, uh, property revenue to be raised from new properties. So they said, okay, you don't have to include new property. Uh, and then, pro, uh, raise from new property added to the tax roll this year, also for the amount of frozen tax. Property taxes are increased by one hundred forty seven thousand eight hundred forty nine dollars. So you don't include that, that six point five five you had to take out the frozen tax, you had to take out the, uh, the new property that's bigger. Uh, my goal when I came in as county judge was not to raise the tax rate, leave the tax rate the same. Uh, and just bring in the new property. You can do that as long as the economy is doing what it's doing now. But everyone in this room is living, pumping up, you've seen it go the other way too, and there will be a battle. I personally believe that Austin has done an injustice to the counties and the municipalities by setting, now they, they come across saying, oh, we're the taxpayer saviors of the state of Texas. And that's not the way it works. The way it works is, they set their rate, I believe at eleven point six.
Seven.
Eleven point six, eleven point seven, is what they set their budget, not their tax rate, their budget. So they went up eleven point six or seven. But now, county, you can't go up with three and a half. The problem is, they keep sending these unfunded mandates down for the county to pick up the labor costs. I had a meeting, I had lunch last week with, with our senator. One thing they're looking at this next year is giving the, the, uh, driver's license, renewing your driver's license and stuff for the counties. But, there'll be money coming. Let me tell you how that works. There's money comes with it in your key. And that's the most, you're ever, come check only ten years from now, because every time they go into session, they lower the percentage they're paying on it. A few you can relate on, uh, the engine of events. If you, if anyone gets arrested, can't pay for an attorney, they have a right for a question, for, for an attorney fee applied to them. That's our taxpayer dollars paying for that turn. And when it first started, that was.
Well, when it first started, the state picked up ninety two percent, and the counties picked up eight. They were picking up during the ninety percent, they're picking up teen.
Well, the cost has went up skyrocketing. So it's just not, and anything, so, so their, their budget's eleven point six or seven. And then they run out of money, they're out of money, but we're supposed to live on three and a half down here. It, it's just, if you ask me, it's just playing with rocks and rivers.
And, and it's really something that, that really bugs me. Last, last night they passed what was called city bill two. City bill two was three and a half percent, but also in there was a deal for the schools. And the schools can't raise their, two and a half percent, because the state says we're paying you more money. But, we're not gonna pay you more money unless the appraisals for all of the property in the county is a market bank. That's where is the appraisal going up so much is sad, is they're having to do that, satisfy the state, so the state can send the schools more money. It, it's crazy, sir. You know, we understand that the battles, child, how you, the state life or so forth. But, but the raises that, that we're talking about, and, and, and your hands have worked for you, you did a great job, a bunch of work. And if anybody deserves a raise, they deserve it. But I, if I were sitting up there where y'all are, I wouldn't feel right for sitting, uh, voting for a raise for my own job, is what I, what I'm saying.
And that's what I came for, because, uh, because this year, I would, I would be embarrassed to ask. I will say that where I work, the economy and the, uh, everything about that type of business, I hadn't had a raise in three years. But you know what? I was grateful for my job, and I was grateful for my benefits and everything that I was able to add up a little bit more for social security. I, that's what you gotta do. You gotta either accept it or, or, or not, but, um, there's a lot, and, and the friend that's retired teacher, she said they haven't had any kind of a cost of living raise for them. She and her husband both are retired teachers. So anyway, yeah, and I, and it's gonna sound terrible that we're saying that to y'all, but that's, that's the way we feel. Now, you, now, everybody that's working in the sheriff's office and, and the jail and everything, if you can figure out how to give them a raise, that's wonderful. I would not accept a raise.
Thank you. And I will tell you, I'm not.
I'm sorry.
I'm not going.
You haven't before either, I know, right?
But, your black clothes, but, you know, the, and Marco likes it.
Thank you, Ted.
Yeah. It's getting harder, you, you say the second word, we're up to that. Uh, it's getting harder to get qualified people to run for positions. Someone, I, I told all these guys here, yes, I'm probably, I, uh, here, uh, just to come in and work for this salary, uh, it's, it's difficult. Retired or something, you, you're on, retirement or something, you, you do it, but, they, uh, I want to thank you for, for, for being here.
Appreciate you.
I, I appreciate you, here. It is difficult, you know, uh, Mr. Black, I can, he started the sheriff's department saying for a long time that we don't pay them enough, and I, I, and, and I agree, they don't make enough at the sheriff's department for what they did. So, and we train them, we send them, we send them, the sheriff's trained, and the next thing you know, they, we get them trained for Kaufman County, or Rockwall County, or another, Anderson County, yeah. You know, it's, it's a battle, and it, it's a battle to keep the employees here, and everybody's, yeah. And we, like, today, uh, this, this meeting, once we reconvene out the public, we, we've got all the tax laws. I mean, election laws, for the election laws. It is massive of the election, all the laws, deadlines, requirements, just the whole, the election. So you finally get someone, person trained in there, in the election law, and stood up, and, uh, and then you lose, you know, Trump County, or Rockwall County, because I just stepped out of county, county.
Anderson.
Anderson County, you, you, you can, they step out and go forever, uh, but, uh, Judge, you made a valid statement, just, it said it's tough to get people to go to work unless they have the time. Uh, you know, do what you do. And, you know, so you, I mean, you know, and, and if you look at it, you hit the nail on the head, and I, like sheriff's, that is, department, just about, I'll just use that, I'm pretty familiar with that one. If you go over the forty right now, apply for a job, you'll make fifty seven thousand dollars a year to start. There's what, eleven, how many miles are in Van Zant County? Eleven hundred miles of road?
Yeah.
Over, over. Yeah, so you got a, you got a limited number of sheriffs that discover eleven hundred miles. If anyone, particularly, you're getting, period, time, they can't back up, you know, the local police departments. The local police departments are happier right now, sheriffs and parks, which are like, the argument is the amount of money. And the fact that they're not driving eleven hundred miles and wearing out people. So, the, you know, what's the solution? Could you double the officer's pay and figure out where you come up with that money? That would shock the whole system, but, you know, if you want to talk about, you know, the trickle down effect, what Tim said, where you really have problems in the mandate, so if you increase the officer base, you're gonna increase the arrest rate. You've already increased the arrest rate on female incarcerations, and all on the high in Van Zant County. Okay, it's far the way exceeds the jail capacity, and that's why we end up with, we had sent Kaufman County, because the jail not set up to segregate the population of offenders. So you increase the incarceration rate, you increase the number of people asking for lawyers, and your budget now is gonna get whacked to no end. So, it's kind of like a vicious circle, but you hit the nail on the head, and that is that we keep hiring people and training them, even if it's a road crew. I mean, Keith, how many guys do you go for? I mean, Keith, how many guys do you go for, Virgil? I mean, you know, I mean, how many loyal guys do you have left that have been here ten, fifteen, twenty years? But they know they can go someplace else and make money. Or, so I don't know what you're gonna do about, you know, the salaries, I think the three percent is reasonable. Is it enough? I don't know that it's enough. I don't know if there's not somewhere else you can cut the budget and put more money into some of the workers, you know, into the, into the, into the real labor of, of the county. But it seems to me to bring the value up, the property tax is going up, the mandate is coming down for Austin, we're not getting the caliber of employee that we want. I can't see the justification of why my tax is going up. I just can't see it. My roads keep striving standards and keep them, keep them up, but, you know, you, you can't even put, spend the money on the roads to do them to the level of tech stock. Like, I can look at how Iowa A is built, it's over the same sand that thirty-five, twenty-three is built on. That we hired a professional company to come in and build a half a mile of roads, built over fifty thousand dollars, and they're back out there less than two years later fixing it. Because it's got major piles and it's all apart. What's the difference in the turning corner? No difference. It's just that, that we don't have the money to build the roads to do the things that we need to do in the county. And how's it gonna solve itself? Better hope for more businesses and more population increases.
More growth.
More businesses, more businesses, yeah, I mean, that's, that, you know, we gotta, you gotta, yeah, we gotta do something. Yeah, I think, I'm, for you can take all the money, Benz and County, shut every department down, and you can take all the money, Benz and County can put it on the roads. Just give it, bind it up, and you still aren't there. There's not enough, and you can take every dollar brought in Benz and County, put it on these roads. That's off of this, uh, I mean, you know, cost of life. When you cost, the amount it does build a mile of road, how much do you, I mean, they're not, it's actually equal.
Well, it's gonna be somewhere around sixty-eight thousand dollars to do over like one road, one mile of road.
One mile of road, how many miles did you have?
Oh, I have just under three hundred, about two hundred and seventy, but I have seven hundred thousand dollars to do that with, so you can figure out how that works. But one day, I, I do want to say, talk about the budget, uh, and we were talking about the police officers and, uh, about eleven years ago, the sheriff's department got roughly twenty-three or twenty-four percent of our total budget. Today it's over fifty percent. So, in the budget, so, and, I mean, it's not like we're not trying to get them there.
I mean, we've tried, I mean, it's just, you know, and I thought we were on a good track.
I, I try to be honest with you, whatever, whatever I can. It's often, uh, so, we, we give the sixty million dollar, eighteen dollar debt. Are we gonna have any of that when you run that down?
No, no, we're still, we got that three and a half percent. Now, I don't, I mean, yeah, uh.
I mean, you have, so, I have to say the number of three and a half percent, more coming in, which will be servicing that.
Okay, you can be good here for a squish.
Well, the, I, I, I kind, you talk about the debt that we still have, which is fifty dollars. Just want to get that thing off of that.
It's hurting about eighteen.
Honestly, it's gonna hurt, because right now, you don't include that money in the figure of a three and a half percent. If we had that much more money in, we have to reduce our taxes that much more. In fact, this is sad, but to me, the way that law was passed, it says, counties, you all need to go and dead as far as you can go. And then you'll have more money to do whatever you need to do with.
That was my point, that was my point in Austin, was you sit here and complain about the counties being, they, it looks like you just passed a law, I mean, to encourage them to go borrow money. Because if you don't include that either, we could borrow money this year, uh, but on roads and stuff, borrow money. And that wouldn't count towards three and a half percent, because you let that, then the three, and I don't think you're gonna see the full effect of what they've actually done to the schools, to the counties, and to the cities. For about, I would say, four or five years, you're going to start really seeing the effects. My, my, I believe honestly, you'll see some counties or some cities go bankrupt. Because at some point in time, if you, and their debt is, we didn't cap you, we didn't, we didn't cap you three and a half percent. At any point in time, you go over, you don't have, and this is the first year we're trying to do it. If you went over the eight percent, they had to get a petition, the citizens could get a petition and ask for a road fund. That's gone. If you go over the three and a half percent, it's automatic election. It's, there is no petition, it's just automatic. And the deal is, okay, if you can sell it to the public, then you, you can raise it. Where do you want to raise it? I mean, well, that's easy to say. But people are tired of watching their taxes, like Mr. Blackman, go up and up, when, when they believe with no justification, no, no uniform, what percent? Okay, if everything that was up, what percent across the board? But when you got five, and they're all different. Now, I will tell you, Scott says, Scott Hyde, and he's a great guy, if you can all, he's, he's a good guy. They get audited by the state, the appraisal district. They, they come up and, and they pull, uh, properties and they do a state audit just on the appraisals. To make sure that they're staying, the appraisal, they're, they're appraising properly. And they have, they have been appraised, you know, audited, they pass their appraisals and everything. Some counties have not. So some counties, uh, the appraisal guys have been replaced because, or they'll send somebody from Austin. And they don't do these appraisals, you know, uh, that's reasonable. But you guys are right, they had a bracket number of protests, uh, on those appraisals and stuff. It is fair to dig with the budget he gave us, and we're gonna get with the tax rate. You'll see that he gave us, and it's hard to set up a budget. When we had, I just turned my budget, began to propose budget you're looking at, with the numbers provided, when you still have the protests going on. And so we worked off that. I, my budget has been turned in by the end of July. But they give us certified numbers all this, this, so what you're looking at is, is, will change. It will change once we get the concrete numbers and they're projected. Okay, this is the, this protest we've had at this point has had disappeared. And we're projecting, and Scott does a great job on projections, he gets real close, you can go in, he does it, and certainly. And so, but I hear people saying the appraisal is not gonna go back.
And we get blamed for a lot of that, because, you know, don't let Benz and County appraisal district fool you. We have nothing to do, no control over the appraisal district. But we, we get a lot of blame for it.
You're losing the property now.
No, we didn't do it.
Right, I, I, I'll chime in on that. There's a lot of counties out there that the county citizens have their own tax rate. The schools have their own tax rates. The cities have their own. What counties have, like, they do it for a reason. Because what's the first time people do the things they count? They're blaming us for everything. But it says Benz and County, I ain't gonna win the second, I live in Benz School District, it's hot. But they need to lower their tax rate, they need to lower that tax rate every year, done, done, and that school rule has loaded every year, and, and they've stood behind that. And they can keep, keep doing it. We have to, but we still get blamed for it, but it says Benz and County. We can't do that for a reason. And did it because of splitting the market, they wanted to show everybody that this is where we are, we're not the schools, and we're not the cities, this is us. That's why they did that.
I agree, I'm doing very shade. You guys be weird. My friend, he's been a dear friend of mine for years. He was there when I was a J thing, and he knows my heart, uh, where I stand. Nothing hidden about me, no secret agendas, nothing hidden, it's all out here. I think the commissioners, uh, we've been in this room for, for quite a while, working on this budget. I hear what you say. And that was a concern of ours, is on this budget, is how many people's gonna be put, put forward for taxes? How many, how many link ones are we gonna have this, this year? And so we sent out eleven, all in the department, it's, you just found, have the same budget you had last year, and unless there's something specific, you need to come talk to us about.
It's worked out fine.
And it's worked out, it's worked out, it's right, we, you know, we got to do it, they won't, it is. But I, I do, I do, I do appreciate it. Is there any blame, Mr. Blackman, you can claim anything else? I'm good, mate. You have any blame you know?
I would say that I, I believe you're in the position you're in because you care about Benz and County. And that's why, why you, you're at home thinking, well, maybe I can serve, maybe I can help, but because you care about the county. Not because you're trying to make something. And so it, and so we appreciate it, but that's, I came here knowing that, you're here because you care. And we, and we love, this is our home, so we love Benz and County and, and all the citizens here that are, that we see what they're going through. So we, we do appreciate it, John.
Great, thank you. Anything else? And we're going to conclude the vote, there's a going into the tax rate. That will conclude the, uh, public hearing on the proposed budget. Senator, we need a vote on that.
I have a vote to reject, except for modify.
Approve, approve, reject, or modify that budget. And I would tell you that budget does not have the actual numbers that we were given, August the seventh.
You can make a vote for a motion.
I, it is gonna be a motion of mine.
Yeah. I make a motion if the modified budget, you'll send in on July third.
Senator, you have a motion by Commissioner West. This is our second, you have a second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion to adjourn. That did not need to be a record vote, did it?
No.
When would the record vote come to be? I think September.
It would be adopted by September the second.
September the second. All in, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. The modified, to be proposed, but. I have a number four, discuss and consider approval of proposed tax rate twenty twenty. This year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, paper record vote set date and time of the public hearing on the tax rate. The notice, uh, to the public, hearing, notice of public hearing on tax rate, we have seen a tax rate of point five eight zero four two eight, for a hundred dollar evaluation. We got that copy of that?
Two eight.
It's, it's.
Two eight.
Two nine.
Two nine is the voter approval tax rate, we're not going to the voter approval.
Okay. We're about, we're copying.
Okay, he's a, uh, he's a guy.
Okay, yes.
Hey, yeah.
I, I.
Okay, get Christie, get Christie running, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, get Christie running. But she don't have it, right?
I got it.
I might talk to you.
Yeah, that's it, you, right there, you're right.
I might talk to you for the one night.
There, there. Send this one here.
No, that's.
You know, that's, this one.
I got it, damn.
This is the ad that'll run in the newspaper.
And I'll wait just a minute for him to give you a copy of it, and that way we can come down and prove that to us. That changed all of us. The language, Austin, where we used to have tax, effective tax rate and rollback rate, they took that out of that scale. Now you have no new revenue, revenue rate, which is the effective tax rate. Yes, they're probably need one, uh.
Here's more.
Okay. Okay, that's notice of public hearing on the tax increase, a tax rate of point five eight zero four two eight for a hundred dollar evaluation is being proposed by the governing body of Benz and County. The proposed tax rate is point five eight zero four two eight for a hundred dollar evaluation. The no new revenue, revenue rate is point five 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 six one nine for a hundred dollar evaluation. And the voter approval tax rate is point five eight zero four two nine for a hundred dollar evaluation. The no new revenue tax rate is the tax rate for twenty twenty tax year that will raise the same amount of money of property tax revenue for Benz and County from the same properties in both two thousand and nineteen and tax year of twenty twenty. The voter approval rate is the highest rate that Benz and County may adopt without hoping to election to seek voter approval of that rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new tax, no new revenue tax rate. That means the Benz and County is proposing to increase property taxes for the twenty twenty tax year. A public hearing on the proposed, uh, tax rate will be held on September the second, twenty twenty, at nine a.m., Benz and County Courthouse, County Court. The proposed tax rate is not greater than the voter approval tax rate. As a result, Benz and County is not required to hold an election. At which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate, however you may express your support or, or opposition to the proposed tax rate by contacting the members of the Benz and County Commissioner's Court of Benz and County at their offices or by attending the public hearing mentioned above, which was on September, will be on September the second, twenty twenty, right here. What that says is what we've already discussed, some of the proposed tax rate, that proposed tax rate is, uh, point five eight zero four two eight, which is right under the three and a half percent. Matter of fact, we believe, talking to Scott, that the point five eight zero four two nine, but we stayed under, we, we went, that's really, you see, two eight, still the two nine. The, the no new revenue rate is the rate that used to be the effective tax rate. That, that point five 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 six one nine would draw in the exact same dollars that you brought in last year. The voter approval rate, which usually the rollback rate, which was eight percent and now three and a half, that's the rate. So that is the notice to the public. Is there any discussion or questions on that? Questions? I'm gonna need a record vote, take the record vote, set the date and time of the public hearing on the tax, tax rate, which would be September the second, twenty twenty, nine a.m., right here, in the courtroom. Yeah, I'm gonna need a motion to set, to, to set that September the second, twenty twenty, nine a.m., public hearing. Yeah, I'm gonna need a motion to set, to, to set that September the second, twenty twenty, nine a.m., public hearing.
How much motion, you said that tax rate at point five eight zero four two eight?
Set the public hearing on the tax rate.
Do you need a motion on the tax rate, or?
Just need a motion on setting that. Yeah, there was such a tax rate, that was your motion?
That's my motion for, for one dollar.
We got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, got a second by Commissioner Brown. To set the public hearing on the tax increase for September the second, twenty twenty, on the tax rate, on the tax rate of point five eight, uh, five, point five eight zero four two eight. Got a motion, second, any discussion? Questions? Be it done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Our public hearing, what are your, your hat?
I'm a hat, I said I'm a hat.
Pearson, aye.
So, now you need, now you need a, a motion on the, the day? That what you understand? Yes. I hope it's all one motion. Set it today? Yeah. Need a motion to set the public hearing. Make a motion to set the public hearing on the tax, due to the, for the tax rate. Tax increase. Tax increase on September the second, at nine a.m. Motion by Commissioner Melton, and a second, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Be it done, all in favor, say aye. I want a record vote to make a motion. Commissioner Melton, aye. Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Pearson, aye.
Yes. All opposed? Motion carried. I think that covered it, is that clear? Any questions? There what?
I just need the options to fill out the.
Okay, item number five, discuss and consider Van Zandt County to order the November the third, twenty twenty general election. Got motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Melton. Question or discussion? Be it done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will have a general election, November the third. Item number six, discuss and approve early voting and election day voting locations, you want to go with that, or Susan?
We kept it pretty much with the same locations that we've had in the past. The only thing that we are possibly going to have to change it, they did add a week to it, so, but the locations are all gonna be the same, they're gonna be open. We're not leaving.
What do you mean they added a week to?
It was gonna be three, it was early voting.
Three weeks of early voting? Due to COVID?
I think they should do that here. Have they sent, uh, December?
We didn't get Brian. So, not to cover, I mean, it's uncovered the COVID cleaning, we're not covering more COVID packs, and we're gonna try to do that this week. We have two COVID packs per location, possibly three at two of the locations, if you can. Just get the lines moving and doing social distancing and everything.
They're gonna mandate toward where our baskets, I have to.
Yeah, they ordered that, so. We can't mandate it unless you order.
And what, where are these locations?
You should have those in there. They're in, it's right spot there.
You have a copy yet?
Yes. And this is for early voting?
Yeah, early voting will be.
Early voting still have a second.
Have place, old city hall. It'll be a three days, so on the thirteenth. And then election today is all our regular work page, which includes city halls.
Susan, that statewide, if they, if they were to do that for early elections, for presidential election, three, three weeks early voting?
Yes.
Also.
And there's a possibility, we did change our, the hours in a week, we tried to do, because we're doing city elections and school elections, this is not a community. We've got a lot going on, so with that, the city elections, you have to have two days, three, they're twelve hour days. They're mandated by that, so we chose the two third days, is what we're doing, but they can also petition us for more days, so. With that being said, I may be coming back for, um, money to pay the election ordinance. We're trying to figure out two, and exactly what that's gonna cost us.
And then it's huge, the election is a huge expense on the county. And if y'all remember, these elections are very, very expensive. I guess everyone remembers all the hanging chads in Florida a few years ago. And so, they, they give grants to file this voting machinery, and go with the electronic voting stuff, a bit that, and then they give a grant. That's one of those unfunged mandates. Guess what, the first time. Now, all the fucking machines are starting to become obsolete. We stay with ours, they're staying with it. Right now, you can get parts and stuff to fix the machines and everything. But we're gonna have, that's an expense the county's gonna have to pick up now. It's very, very, it's, those machines are expensive. So, is there, is there, you see the early voting and election day voting locations?
I gotta mention this, since all these elections are combined together, or we're compacting cities and the schools on helping, on supporting this. I mean, we're, we're gonna budget, and our county business to cover all these up, and it's not us tonight, I'm not saying. We're all in this together, but we need some help from them.
The only thing we can actually charge them for is going to be for their ballots. Because the locations are going to be open, we will be paying already people to be there. And the regulations are, we're gonna be working there, and we're gonna have people that are gonna pay for their ballots. Now, they've offered to send people, to pay some people, we're actually, we're working that out right now, in fact, their contracts are being signed today, and to send them over, so that everything can. Then we'll look at that and see how many people do we go and need here. They're suggesting having six to seven people per location. That's what the city's charging. I mean, some places will definitely be more, but for us, and that's a lot of people, because usually we have maybe more than five.
It's gonna be a big election.
It's gonna be huge, especially being, you know, having cities, schools. And the schools have till next week, how long to let us know? Or end of this week, so it's, on the elections. We contacted everybody, and we've got probably, maybe three that are just calling back to let us know they haven't decided.
How, how, how you gonna make this motion, you gonna make that one this location?
Yeah, we asked the early voting and election day voting location to the motion to approve that is.
So, move, Pearson.
Set a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or discussion? Be it done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seven, discuss approval of appointment of election judges for a two-year period. We have a list of the election judges before you. Did y'all make a motion to approve the list? The motion is the second. Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner West. As soon as this says twenty twenty general election, okay.
Right, and we should have a Republican list there too, like this.
Yeah, the one you have to pull. I don't know if you have that many people there, because that's been a bad.
I know.
Okay. Any other questions for Susan?
I mean, a lot of prayers.
Okay. All in favor of approving the list, Republican, Democrat list of the election judges for two-year period, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is your motion good, y'all? So, move, here's our motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Here are your. Thank y'all for being here.
I guess we have. The shows, the shows. Appreciate it. It's, you, would you like a copy of that? Oh, you have it.